I'd like to call our main meeting door please. This time. I won't have.
All right.
I don't quit $5 if I can't. I'd like to call for the Clark Ridge Road.
Brian Herring, present. Mary Jean Krieger.
Present.
Mitch Magnus. David Wilson. His way. Brian Oswald.
Keith Kirkpatrick.
Present.
Joel Williams.
Here.
Dana Taylor.
Present.
Thank you. At this time, I would ask everybody please stand and Mr. Kirkpatrick please make a prayer. Our main standing for a place, please.
All right, let's pray. God, just thank you for this gorgeous day. Lord, we thank you for this wonderful city that we get to live in called Harrison. God, thank you for our civil servants, Lord, that provide, protect for all of the citizens. And God, we just thank you for them. And Lord, we thank you for the wisdom that you give us to be good managers, to be leaders. And you put us in these positions. God, we ask you for wisdom and guide us to do what's best for the city of Harrison. We just praise you for your goodness and grace over this place in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where we stand, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you have a press here on your laptops or you can email minutes from April 27th. All of the playing motions for approval of those minutes.
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion on the minute? There being none, all is confirmed by eye.
Eye.
All opposed, same. I'm going to deviate a little bit from our agenda tonight. We have some special guests with us. I'm going to skip on down. And at this time, I want to present Mr. Alan Barrett with their certificate. Mary Jean, you and Marvin, come on out there in front. And then I'll get out there in front. I think we have some other people with us. And Mr. Barrett, I think we have the family that you helped. That was good. I think they're here. Are they not?
Well, I guess so. I thought they were going to be here. I'm sorry.
He said it was going to try to be. Did you get hold of him?
Okay, I wish they were here. But let's get out here. And Mary Jean, you're a promoter for this young man helping out. And I'm going to let you read.
I didn't. It's hard.
Well, I can do it if you don't want to.
No.
Okay.
Because we're so very proud of you and for you. The Harrison Fire Department and Harrison Arkansas. This certificate is to recognize Alan Barrett for his exceptional valor in assisting the Harrison Fire Department Swift Water Rescue Team on the 29th day of April 2017. Our assistance and service is greatly appreciated. Yours. And we thank your family for sharing this.
Yeah. Luke is not here, but I think he has something to pull up there. He sent some financial status, general overview. Our general funders net loss of $108 so far through the last month. Actually, our projected budget is more of a net loss than that. We're probably on a trend of around $50,000 to $100,000. Probably in the whack with this figures. If you want to read on down there. Where our fund's set right now. Actually, we're in pretty good shape. If you look, they say they lost, but they're projected to be a loss. Like I say, Luke's on vacation, so they won't bother us. Is any police and fire getting along?
Ready.
You want to bring up one of our?
Let's wait. Okay. Okay, Mr. Edington's got something to cover. Of course, he's probably read it in the paper, because I already know. He's going to bring up the bond payment we received.
We went to hearing three weeks ago in Little Rock. We got the bond passed and cleared at the hearing. We received a check last week for $29,263 of the recovered money from the bond issued from Crystal Valentine. So we do have that in our possession and it is on our account in the general fund. So we talked to the commission the other night, Parks Commission, and we're looking at our assets that were coming up for 2017. And we're looking at priorities of what we need to replace with that money and how we can use it. So that's our plan right now. Swimming pool update. Everything's good. All leaks. We finished the ceiling of the liner last week. And pools up and running. It opens Monday. So everything's looking good right now. Summer wreck's been in it all week, so even though it's been a little bit cold.
It's been a little bad.
I want to brag on Luke. For the past three weeks, we've been doing our district and regional and state tournaments, and they came out and helped us two weekends in a row.
Wade.
Wade, sorry. Wade, sorry. I think we pulled two tarts in like 30 minutes, had them off the field. So I just want to recognize him and his guys for helping us out in the parks and the regionals and state tournaments. So thanks a lot.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, we'll move down into committees. If we have anything you want to bring up. Mitch Magnus not here, so we kind of went over the financial. Mr. Wilson, you have anything?
No, sir.
Mr. Craggar, we've already done some of yours, but we'll move into the Swift Water Rescue Equipment.
Tonight, I'm going to turn that. Oh, look who's here. These are the two people that were rescued. And he was just laying around. He'll be a week old tomorrow, I believe. He's a beautiful baby. We're so happy to have you two here. There's Mr. Barrett back there.
Barrett, you want to get back up here with them? Get in there.
We're happy to see you all and him too.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Are you turning this over?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry, I got carried away. I wanted to hold for later.
Now, though, this is perfect time. At the committee meeting, I got brought up how much we need a rescue boat, Swift Water Rescue Boat. We need one for a while with Lake Harrison and all. We go with the river quite a bit to help out for rescues and all. So I got recommended that we get prices, and we have, as is shown on the screens here. It's a 14-foot, we priced 14 foot, 2 inch, and it's going to have a 30-horse motor on it, and with a trailer. And the stuff that we're going to need with it, the extra life jackets, ropes, waterproof radios, I believe the price all comes out to something like $24,700, I believe it is. So I guess at this time, we're asking for the council to approve it in a purchase form. Now, does it have to be added, more money appropriated because it was not in our budget? So this has to be an add-on expense. Do you have any questions?
I will say that the total amount, that includes all accessories and all that money is not, we're in restraints of bidding because actually what we're buying from one person is under $20,000.
Yes, yes. Actually, the place in Little Rock, I sent three guys down to Little Rock, looked at PRS Little Rock, and I believe that's going to come to like maybe $18,000. And then the other stuff comes from like the National Rescue Supplies for ropes and our life jackets and all come from different places. So it is all under $20,000. So pardon me for the one purchase.
And I noticed that the instruction was included in this for our, in the operation.
For training.
Yeah, introduction.
Well, to the price, yes.
And that's included.
Yes. And that's to send, they're going to send a guy up here for like 10 people, and then they can train and get everybody trained that way. Now, something I want the council to understand, that we're running close on space. I think we can store this right now here at Station 1. But we use that room there when we have major fires and stuff to put our equipment back together. So it's a possibility that, I mean, right now, we've got a rescue truck, I mean, a rope rescue truck that's in a training building that's not isolated on heated or cooled at Station 2. We're going to check about maybe adding on to Station 2, or in the near future, we're going to have to look at where we're going to store it, whether it's building a new station or if we want to spend the money if we can, because Station 2 is in the flood lane, and we got to see how, I got to get surveyed, I'm sorry. I need to get checked out first, just so the council is prepared.
Chief Holt, who always a part of making sure this is what we needed? I'm assuming that members of the Swift Water Team were a part of selecting the boat and all the information needed.
Yeah, the Swift Water Team, Matt went on with specs. I sent three person down, assistant chief Robbie Haley and Jeremy Sampson, all of Little Rock, and looked at the boat down there. We had a man that come in from the Park Service, that's what he does a lot of, Billy Bell. He come in and gave a good presentation on the do's and the don'ts and what we needed. And he explained to us that this boat here would be best for our need. We could, I mean, you can take the motor off, you can carry it to get it to the place where you need to. Something we also had a problem with in Harrison, a lot of people don't think about it, but when we drain Lake Harrison, we have a lot of problem with mud. He'd get up there and play and get stuck in mud. And it's a real problem. We've had that before. We have to lay ladders out, park the plywood, get out there where we can use this boat. We can slide it out on this mud to rescue whoever that's stuck in that. You know, it can be used, it can be used a lot, you know, not a lot, but it can be used at weird, every place.
And my understanding after talking to chairman over here is that they needed a longer boat so that they needed to carry a body or something like that was.
The 14-foot boat is long enough for a backboard. To put a backboard in the middle of it. And put rescue personnel on the sides. You ride, you kind of sit on the side of the boat and have it. It's more usable, more feasible than a flat bottom aluminum boat. This area, of course, you store it, it'll be on a trailer. They don't recommend it being inflated real tight until it's fully used because it's going to stretch it out. Of course, it can't be stored outside. It's got to be in a controlled environment, more or less. The motor is, it's a prop motor, but it's got like a cover over it, it's like a turbine prop that covers the motor, the prop, so you don't get no one in the prop or get into rocks or gravel and stuff like that.
Outside of storing, is there any other cost or anything that you see are items needed for this?
Not at this time. I mean, there's always that chance. I mean, we could take it out on the first rescue and hang it up on T-boats and rip it open. I mean, that's the chance you take, you know. But they use these type boats on rivers, on major rivers, Colorado, you know, everywhere they use them. So they, they're perfect.
Yeah, that's what I want to make sure, just to make sure that was submitted here. I just saw it, the waterproof radios.
Yes. Perfect. Yes, they're, and we're trying to equip this boat so that it'll have everything it needs with it. I mean, we, our guys are swimmers, they have their own personal life jackets, their own personal sweatsuits. But we're going to try to equip this boat with everything. If you hook on to this boat, it's got everything you need.
Just following back up, I notice it looks like there's only two waterproof radios. Is there a reason?
It's seven, too.
It's seven, two.
There's four.
How many men are on the Swift Water Team that are out at the time?
Well, they can be, I mean, over, we've got pretty much all of our department here. That'd be something that we can work on as we go, we want to get the waterproof radio.
I would suggest that.
Our radio we've got is water resistant.
Right.
But waterproof, not at all.
When you're fighting fires, you're dealing with water.
Absolutely.
That makes sense.
But it's not, you know, they're not ready to.
And it's a.
So, I mean, yeah. So that could be something that we ongoing, I mean, you will have ongoing expenses, so I mean, I can, you know, further equipment. We may need more ropes, we may need, you know, just whatever, you know, just kind of go with what you might need. But this is what we sit at this time to get us started up and going, and then we'll go from there on that.
Have any more questions?
I'd like to make a motion that we have purchased the boat motor and all necessary equipment for our Swift Water Team. And I'd also like to see this project completed within 90 days. That way they'll be ready for the fall rains and they'll have their training then.
I'm on that. I agree. I don't know exactly how long it's going to take us to get everything in the boat and all. I don't remember Robbie's.
I think we can have everything within 30 days.
Okay. Was it for sure?
The boat is pretty, I mean, I think it'd be pretty quick.
Okay. I want to be sure that, we'll call tomorrow and order it, but I want to be sure that we, you know, have a chance to get it.
We made a motion, we had a motion in a second to purchase the boat. This will be a somewhat, this is out of budget, so appropriate the money for this.
Marvin's got plenty of money. We'll take down his paycheck.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to purchase the boat. It will be black in color. It will not be this color. This is not the color.
Actually, it may be.
Will you change your mind?
Well, no, we got to read more, but we believe it's going to be close to.
Okay, well, great, great.
And we will have lettering put on.
Okay, any further discussion? There being none, all is confirmed by eye.
Eye.
All opposed, same. That's one of those things we hope we never use.
All they do is train it.
Okay. Mr. Oldwell's not here. Mrs. Taylor, we're going to move down into resolutions and ordinances.
Now, we've got the rezon for little tracks located on the south side of Gibson Road, and Van's got some information on that.
Because we have two different zones, we're offering this tonight in two different ordinances. They will be ordinances that will be required to be read three times. And it's up to you as to whether or not you suspend the rules to do all of those readings. I guess, Mr. Hudson?
Yes, sir.
Are, how quickly are you hoping to have the rezones complete? We consider at least three reads tonight?
The sooner the better for the estate, so we can actually, you know, move on down the road, getting a buyer interested in it. There's some interest in the property, but they're not going to do anything until end of that zone.
If we do three readings on this one tonight, and if it is adopted in normal fashion, it would take effect within 30 days from just getting it published.
Okay, you see the first one up there? Anybody's got any questions about it? Is everybody pretty familiar with the territory now since we covered it last time? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to put it on the first reading by title. Any discussion? There being none, I'll have clerk call roll, please. I have a motion in a second. Put it on the first reading by title. Any discussion? There being none, I'll have clerk call roll, please. Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus absent. David Wilson?
Yes.
Brian Oswald absent. Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Okay, I'll have to, I'm sorry.
An ordinance amending section 14.16 of the zoning map of the Harrison Municipal Code to rezone certain lands from zone suburban agricultural to zone R3 multifamily.
Okay, entertain a motion to suspend the rules, put it on the second reading by title. Any discussion? There being none, I'll have clerk call roll, please. Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus absent. David Wilson?
Yes.
Brian Oswald absent. Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Assistant. Okay, I'll have to, I'm sorry.
An ordinance amending section 14.16 of the zoning map of the Harrison Municipal Code to rezone certain lands from zone suburban agricultural to zone R3 multifamily.
Okay, entertain a motion for adoption. In a second. Any discussion? There being none, I'll have clerk call roll, please. Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus absent. David Wilson?
Yes.
Brian Oswald absent. Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
An ordinance amending section 14.16 of the zoning map of the Harrison Municipal Code to rezone certain lands from zone suburban agricultural to zone R3 multifamily.
Okay, entertain a motion for adoption. In a second. Any discussion? There being none, I'll have clerk call roll, please. Okay, I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? There being none, I'll have clerk call roll, please. David Wilson?
Yes.
Brian Oswald absent. Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
An ordinance amending section 14.16 of the zoning map of the Harrison Municipal Code to rezone certain lands from zone suburban agricultural to zone R3 multifamily.
Okay, entertain a motion for adoption. In a second. Any discussion? There being none, I'll have clerk call roll, please. Just takes a little.
Kirkpatrick. Oh.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus absent. David Wilson?
Yes.
Brian Oswald absent. Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
An ordinance amending section 14.16 of the zoning map of the Harrison Municipal Code to rezone certain lands from zone suburban agricultural to zone C4 neighborhood commercial.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules, put it on the second, third reading this time. It's by title.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this? There being none, I'll have clerk call roll, please. David Wilson?
Yes.
Brian Oswald absent. Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
An ordinance amending section 14.16 of the zoning map of the Harrison Municipal Code to rezone certain lands from zone suburban agricultural to zone C4 neighborhood commercial.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules, put it on the second, third reading this time. It's by title.
I'll make that motion.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion on this? There being none, I'll have clerk call roll, please. David Wilson?
Yes.
Brian Oswald absent. Keith Kirkpatrick?
Yes.
Joel Williams?
Yes.
Dana Taylor?
Yes.
Brian Herring?
Yes.
Mary Jean Krieger?
Yes.
Mitch Magnus absent. Motion passes.
An ordinance amending section 14.16 of the zoning map of the Harrison Municipal Code to rezone certain lands from zone suburban agricultural to zone C4 neighborhood commercial.
Okay, entertain a motion for adoption, please.
So.
Okay.
Just like whoever. We should run short.
And motion for adoption in a second. All is confirmed by eye.
Eye.
All opposed, same. Mr. Taylor?
The Ritter Communications.
And I think we have some representatives here. Mr. Stroh, if you want to step over there and.
Thank you.
Tell who you are and who you represent, please.
Yes, sir, I'm John Stroh. I'm with Ritter Communications. Thank you for letting me be here this evening. Ritter Communications, Arkansas Company, been in communications business for over 100 years. Have operation, have office here in Western Grove, just south of town. Provide services in this area. We provide telephone service, high-speed internet services, and cable TV services. And provide services like that across most of northern Arkansas. We've been expanding our network. And in the course of that, we have become a what's called a competitive local exchange provider. We provide competitive services in a number of communities outside our traditional service footprint. And we're here tonight asking for authority to provide video services, cable TV services in the city of Harrison. We already provide, as I said, cable TV services in this area, in Jasper, in Pinetown, and Western Grove. We have some facilities inside Harrison today, fiber optic cable, and we will be, over the next year and beyond, probably replacing some more. And as a part of the suite of services that we want to offer, we want to offer video services and cable TV. And to do that, we need authority from the local franchise entity, which in this case is the city of Harrison. We have authority, already have authority to provide telephone and high-speed internet services from the Arkansas Public Service Commission. But the authorities who grant ability to provide video services, cable TV services rests with local franchise authorities like the city council of Harrison. The service that we would be providing is what's called IPTV, Internet Protocol TV. It's not a traditional cable RF signal. And I'll tell you, it's better than I know about that now. We're going to give you all my technical abilities. But having said that, IPTV is, like I said, different from traditional cable in that it's a different type of signal. And it's not 100% clear to us that we have to be here to get the authority to provide them services, but we think it's the right thing to do. So there's no question, we want to come and get that permission from the city just to make sure that we're open, operating in the clear and in the daylight. So we made several comments about that. We will be providing video services as an add-on to the voice and internet services that we provide. It will be a business offering. We're not providing residential services. We're not going to overbuild. We're not gonna overbuild the entire city of Harrison and provide residential cable TV services in competition with Fox or anybody else. It would be primarily for, the video service would be primarily for people in hospitality industry, hotels, motels, restaurants, bars that have TVs in them. In addition, some businesses have TVs, and we might want our video services so they can get all of their services on one bill. Anybody that has a waiting room, doctor's office, or something like that, where they have a TV in the waiting room, we would be able to provide and willing to provide services to them for that TV in their, in their waiting room, if they so choose. This ordinance basically asked, like I said, asked for a commission to provide video services inside the city of Harrison. It does have a provision in there for us to pay a franchise fee. We've asked for it to be the same as whatever Fox pays. We're not asking for any advantage over them, but we don't wanna be disadvantaged either. We'll pay whatever franchise fee they pay. And the channel lineup probably not significantly different from what Fox provides today. And price of service will be competitive with any services that other video providers are able to offer. We are, it's not, service is not imminent. Going through three meetings, or three separate monthly meetings is perfectly okay. We're not gonna hurry to get that ordinance passed. If you wanna hold it for three readings, that's fine with us. Be glad to answer any questions, and if we come back for a future meeting, be glad to do that, too. With me tonight is Mr. Bob Mouser, who lives here in Harrison. His office is in Western Grove. And we'd be glad to answer your question anytime. If you think of a question next week and wanna send me an email or give me a call, you've got my card, I'd be glad to answer your question or get you an answer if it's something that I don't, that I can't answer the right way. I'd answer any questions or give you any more information you desire.
Mr. Stroh, thank you for being here tonight. Just this afternoon, I met with the city engineer, and we have gone over your contract and liability deal. The majority of it's good for us. There are three or four items that I would like to, maybe through email or communications with you in the next week or so, propose what we were seeing in the contract portion of it, that we would like to at least discuss with you. And our, our plan would be is to have this ready for our committee meetings the second Thursday evening of June. And then bring it to, if the council so desires, bring it to our business meeting one month from now.
That's fine. That's perfectly acceptable. I will not be able to be here on the eighth, I think that's the second Thursday?
If we have everything ironed out with you.
But, but, but Mr. Mouser can be here for the committee meeting.
None of these things are considered that, at all hostile, of course, to your request. I would anticipate that we'll be able to get this in a form that's acceptable to all of us.
I would anticipate that as well. We're pretty flexible.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Stroh.
Yeah, thank you very much. I'm going back to Jones, probably, I may not be as cute. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Taylor.
Motion table in a second, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Mr. Taylor, you have anything else?
No, sir.
Mayor's comments? And I have a reaffirmation of the ABC board I'd like to have bring to you. Michael Jeff Christensen, one of the original members of that board, and he would like to continue serving on that board. So, I'll present his name to the council for reaffirmation, but that is a six-year term.
I'll make that motion.
For reaffirmation, in a half a second. Any discussion? There being none, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Okay, I'll move on down, I've got an inland update I promised you I'd do at this time. And after many hours of discussion, it is coming from this chair that I would like to see a motion to authorize myself to terminate the inland service contract as of September one, two thousand seventeen, excuse me. I have a motion on the table.
I'll second it.
And I have a second. Okay, at this time, I will open it up for discussion. Does any of the council members have any discussion on this? Does any of the, anybody in the audience have a discussion on this? There being no discussion, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye? Motion carries. Okay. Aye, at this time, the council, any discussion? Okay, I will open it up to the public at this time.
Mr. Mayor, what will be the procedure with this vote to approve the termination of the inland contract to replace waste management services for Harrison?
Could you restate that, please?
How you gonna pick up where they leave off, when it comes to?
That's not been decided yet.
When can we expect, are there gonna be public hearings on that, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Contract provides that any decision is, that we've made is subject to mediation. It would have to be at the request of inland. So, you might say that declaring the termination begins a process that could involve negotiation, that could resolve it, mediation, and could eventually lead to litigation.
Any further questions? There being none, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment.
We all have one.
Yes.
I thought we were still asking questions about inland. I'm Casey Whitney with the chamber. We just had crawdad day, so I just kinda wanted to say a big thank you to the city. The Monday morning after the flood, James from Public Works was knocking on our door at eight AM and said, "We will have the park ready to go for you guys by crawdad day." It's very impressed. We worked a lot with Chuck from Parks and Rec, and, you know, with Wade. The police department and the fire department both had a presence there, so I just wanted to say thank you for that, and hopefully it won't rain next year. That's what we're looking forward to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Entertaining motion for adjournment.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, aye?